All right, I will call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. And Vice Mayor Miller, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Certainly.
And then we'll call order after that. I mixed them up. Sorry about that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Amy, if you would call the roll.
Councilmember Bruins. Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Turner is absent. Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mayor Slowey.
Present. Thank you. Next item.
Next item is the video statement. This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. And tonight's meeting replays on Monday, January 30th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. And a DVD is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. Any issues, concerns with the agenda as presented, or I'll accept a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Next item, presentation number four. Presentation of a proclamation proclaiming Sunday, February 26, 2017, as Spay Day USA.
Thank you. And while I love dogs, I really don't care for cats. So I have decided to let former Mayor Ms. Bruins, who I'm sure will do a much better warm and fuzzy job than I would have on this proclamation.[119.42][119.42][laughter]
At first, we have a staff report.
Spade USA.
Mary Poehl with General Services. I just have a flyer for Spay Day to be up in the background while the proclamation goes.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to do the proclamation from up here, and then I will come down. And I believe Jody, is it Moding? Is here today? Jeff? Okay. Well, notwithstanding what Jeff said, we all love our pets. And I think we all agree that if you're going to be a pet owner, you need to be a responsible pet owner. And one of the most effective ways of being responsible is to spay your dog or cat so that they don't produce unwanted offspring. And so today, we are proclaiming Sunday, February 26, a month from today, as Spay Day USA. And I'll tell you that I have been at some of our spay events out at Cbar C and Chipping and all of that. And it's really worthwhile. This is a community effort. We do this in collaboration with the Sacramento Area Animal Coalition, the Humane Society of the US, Born Free USA, Friends of the Sacramento City Shelter Animals, Red Rover Team, Teaching Everyone Animals Matters, Sacramento County Animal Care and Regulation, the SPCA, and some of our supervisors, Don Tole, Don Saylor, and other elected officials. So we in Citrus Heights are committed to being responsible pet owners and to support spaying. So we do this in collaboration with a grant from Petsmart Charities and in partnership with River City Cat Rescue and the Sacramento Area Animal Coalition and our various veterinarian hospitals around the area, including All About Pets. So if someone would come forward, is Jody here to accept this? Okay.
Sorry, I'm not used to this part.
That's all right. So on behalf of the Citrus Heights City Council, we'd like to give you this proclamation proclaiming February 26 as Spay Day USA, and thank you for your service to our beloved pets.
Thank you for your support.
You bet. You want to say a word? You're welcome.
We love partnering with Citrus Heights and Sacramento Animal Area Coalition to be able to provide spaying and neutering services for all the pets in need. And I feel that with the Citrus Heights Animal Services, we've made a big dent in the population here.
Great.
Thank you.[291.68][291.68][applause]
Yeah, and I think we all know, when I look at the price of Spay Day for a cat or a dog, that certainly that's not really even covering your end of the cost. So, I mean, I know it's a partnership, but great, because the less cats that are running around, the better.[315.11][315.11][laughter] But I do have a question on the, can you go back to your slide? That's right. It was income qualified, and I just wanted, if you could explain that to the audience and the public that's watching.
We do have someone from Sacramento Area Animal Coalition who administers the program, and she did want to say a few words.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Alexis Raymond. I'm the board president of the Sacramento Area Animal Coalition. Like you, Mayor, I love all animals. I'm definitely a dog person, though. We can't be grateful enough for the support that we've gotten from Citrus Heights, from All About Pets. We've been organizing Spay Day since the year 2000, so this is our 18th year. And we started off in 2000 with two clinics, All About Pets and the Sacramento SPCA. And All About Pets has been with us for every year since. So they're a great partner in this. As you said, they provide these services essentially free of charge to the community. The cost of a surgery could be anywhere from $100 to $200 or more. And residents are getting it for $15 to $20 for each animal. So it's a great deal for them. And we really appreciate the partnership from Citrus Heights. Mary's been instrumental in working with us to use a Petsmart Charities grant for cats in the community. And I'm so proud that we've been able to work with you guys to alter more than 2,000 animals. So that's a huge dent in the situation. And to answer your question about income qualified, we ask for proof of public assistance or income proof that a household makes $35,000 a year or less. So we're really trying to serve a population that wouldn't be able to afford these services otherwise. So thank you again for your support and for recognizing the importance of spay neuter.
Thank you for coming out. 2,000 less cats, I love it.[435.12][435.12][laughter] It's just me. I'm sorry. My dog will appreciate me when I get home. All right. Next item, please.
Next item, number five, is a report on the results of the 2016 Holiday Referral Program.
Mayor, Sandy's getting set. I just wanted to just take a minute to, you know, we've been doing this program for many years, and Sandy has been really our leader on this program for really most all of those years. And you're about to, you know, this is one of the jewel service programs in Citrus Heights that we're all so proud of. And there's so many people involved to make this work, but it does take someone to sit at the head of the table to really drive something this great. And Sandy's been that person. And you're going to hear some amazing things as she kind of looks back, not on just this year, but over, you know, over the kind of the life of the program. So I just wanted to publicly really recognize and thank her. It's an extraordinary effort. So thank you, Sandy.
Thank you. Excuse me. I appreciate that. My name is Sandy Moravio. I'm the Support Services Manager for the Police Department. As the city manager advised, this is our eighth year. We're wrapping up, and I wanted to provide the results. We helped 53 families this year, including 75 adults and 234 children. Most of you have been involved in this program. The first, you know, year, eight years ago, it started off kind of being a city police event, and we started reaching out and working with the service clubs. And it sort of evolved into really a very unique program, working with the entire community and kind of routing everything through the Police Department. We had 73 city groups and businesses and service clubs and nonprofit organizations, the schools, who are absolutely great partners, helping us find the families. The service clubs are phenomenal. Rotary, of course, always helps us with the food. So it's a great program. On the slide, you can see that all the different things that we collect, anywhere from the toys and gifts and furniture. And this year, we were actually very lucky to actually find a few homeless families that we were able to help, which was a little more unique. We did get one placed. And I will say, at one point, just before Christmas, I sent out an email blast to kind of all the service clubs and the groups in the city and the people that we communicate with regularly on the program. And within a day and a half, we had the entire house furnished, when these people were, you know, basically sleeping on the floor with nothing. I think it was a lot of fun, enjoyable for the people that were bringing things over to them. I mean, the Police Department staff delivered items, but the community did as well directly. When I first sent the email out, not really realizing what we were going to get, it was pretty amazing to see how viral it went just in our community. You know, you see things on social media that go viral, and people are talking about YouTube and all of that. But this, to me, was the Citrus Heights viral way of helping people. We probably could have furnished about five or six houses with it, so it was pretty neat. I think that probably was the highlight of the program for me this year. Additionally, we helped, we did our visit with the Sayonara Center and did our Santa Claus caravan, which several of you participated in. The Sayonara area is always fun. All the kids come out, and we give out stuffed animals and candy canes into everybody else in the route. We were contacted this year from the Way Ministries, who actually is a Sacramento group that is a nonprofit that was hosting a children's party for homeless children. And we donated quite a few toys to that program. So that was something new that kind of presented itself this year. So they were great to work with as well. And of course, our officers throughout the Christmas season have plenty of toys to hand out to the kids after Christmas, during Christmas, depending on what they come across and circumstances. They certainly can kind of be a friend to the kids that we come into contact with in not necessarily favorable circumstances. This next slide, I'm certainly not going to read it, but as you can see, these are our community participants. It's phenomenal. I mean, it's just this entire community. And of course, it includes all of you, all of our employees, the city employees, the police employees. It's pretty impressive. This slide will be on our website as well, if you want to go and look at it, and then look at all of our partnerships. I apologize tonight because Josh Worthing, who was my previous presenter when we first introduced the program, was supposed to be here tonight, and they had to be out of town for a family thing, so they weren't able to make it. But they did provide me these photos. They partnered up. This is their first year. It was for Josh's Eagle Scout project, which he was very successful at. He collected 635 toys. The whole troupe was great to work with. They had a lot of fun. And I think they're going to probably make this part of their Boy Scout program each year because they really enjoy doing it. So they picked out some good partnerships with the community, and I know that they were collecting toys here at City Hall as well. This is another slide just regarding the thank yous. I will say that although I might lead this program, I certainly do not do all of the work. I have an assistant, Samantha Lofas, who probably screened around 250, maybe 300 families just to select the right families for this program. So she did a great job. Of course, we had Josh. But a lot of all of you, the community, the City Hall people, the Police Department, it's a group effort. So I want to thank everybody for doing that. And then lastly, this is my favorite time. This is the first year, actually, we've done this, but I wanted to present our totals over the eight years of our program. As you can see, we've helped over 2,300 people, adults and children. That includes 417 families, 848 adults, and 1,376 children. So we're really proud of that accomplishment. That was a great, a proud moment for us to count, I guess, so to speak. And again, we couldn't do it without all of you helping and your participation. This is a community event. This is just something that we lead, but we really do it together. So, thank you. Any questions?
No questions, but didn't we have a kind of a special effort on the part of Officer Daryl Olson this year?
For the group homes.
Daryl Olson, yes, we did. So that was something new that we also, that Daryl led and on his own. He had a party, collected toys, using Walmart as a partnership, and provided them Christmas presents as well. And as luck would have it, the group homes ended up kind of having a Christmas party together, so we were able to deliver the gifts to the group home kids all at the same time. And I will say, they sent thank you notes to the Police Department. They're hanging in our building, on our walls. And that was a really great first year as well. And of course, you know, we probably need to do that every year now, so I can see that happening.
Thanks, Sandy. You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Jeanie, because I know just a couple of days that they were out. Went to Walmart, they raised $4,000 to $5,000 worth of merchandise in cash, and that was the first time, you know, for Daryl in that effort. So I think it was a great.
They did.
This effort's great, too. Don't get me wrong.
I know. Absolutely.
Just one more feather in their cap, so.
You bet.
Thank you very much, Sandy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and we'll look forward to you running it again next year.
Okay.
All right. Next item, comments by council members and regional board updates. Mr. Daniels, we'll start with you. I don't think you had any boards. Oh, you did. Good for you.
I did. Actually, this morning, I attended my first meeting with the Air Quality Board.
That's right.
A very large group of people and a very large amount of money being spent on air.[957.38][957.38][laughter] There's a lot of great projects out there, and there's a lot of really smart and thoughtful people that are working on air quality, a whole lot smarter than me. And one thing that I feel that I will focus on when I'm on, while on that board, is taxpayers and making sure that your money's being spent wisely and not just spent to spend. And again, I have no indication of that. They look like a very fine group of people, run by a very solid team, but they're spending about $50 million a year of our taxpayer dollars in the region, and so we'll keep an eye on that.
Great. Thank you, Brett. Jeanie, if you would go next, please.
Well, the Sentation Board has not met since I reported last, but it got a couple of little things here. I attended the Sacramento Area Realtors Association, Association of Realtors Awards Dinner a couple weeks ago, and our own Sue Frost was awarded their Legislative Award of the Year, and I thought that was really nice. I think most of us met, or some of us at least, met with stones to just kind of give our, they had invited the city of Carlsbad in and just kind of give our experience of having stones in the community and what a community partner they've become, employing 400 people and providing a great venue for entertainment and for food. That happened in the last couple of weeks. And then our PAL board meeting met last Thursday, and the board voted to have a strategic plan, our very first strategic planning meeting on May 5th to, we are five years old now to kind of to assess where we are, where we want to go. And so we have hired Marilyn Snyder, who facilitates strategic planning meetings with the city council every six months. And I'm really excited about that. I think it will help PAL really focus in on what we want to do in the future. We'll get more kids involved. We'll have more to offer them. And I'm so very excited about that, and we have a lot going on for the kids this year. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanie. Mr. Miller?
My turn. Had a regional transit meeting this past Monday, and the highlight was the approval for design of the street car, downtown riverfront street car design services. And that's a project that the city of West Sacramento and Sacramento are doing jointly, and they're hiring a regional transit to do this work. And so they're both chipping in $3 million each for the $6 million estimated cost of staff time to do these design services. This project will be owned jointly by the city of Sacramento and West Sacramento, and they will be forming a JPA to spell out the obligations of each city with the upcoming financing, design, construction, operations, and maintenance, and more than likely, just like the Capitol Corridor contract with Amtrak, to operate the trains, it'd be a similar situation. But that's a big hurdle. It's about a $200 million project, but the two cities want to proceed with design, and they're paying for it. So it was unanimous vote to proceed with that. And that's really all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Couple things. First of all, I know the last meeting we had where we kicked off the 20th anniversary celebration, I wasn't here. My dad has 80th birthday, so I kind of felt obligated to be there. But I hear it was a raging success, so thank you, Mr. Miller, for holding that meeting for me. And Jeanie didn't get an opportunity to thank you for being mayor last year, but I won't. I did see some of the comments, so you did a great job. Just keep it up, and you may be there again. Who knows? On the 17th, sat on the Oversight Board to the Successor Agency, to the Community Redevelopment Agency for the city of Citrus Heights. So as you probably all know, many years ago, the state dissolved redevelopment. We, as the city council, sit as the successor agency, but there's an Oversight Board that also has to approve everything that we do, made up of the, all the taxing agencies. I pointed myself to that five years ago, not realizing it would go on for five years. But I'm happy to say, as of the 17th, knock on wood, if the state accepts our closing documents, we should be done with that and be able to very soon dissolve every aspect of redevelopment. So we sold the, as you guys know, in December, we sold the only piece of property we owned, and we should be good. 19th, I went to Secog. Truthfully, nothing much to report out of that. On the 20th, I sat on the League of California Cities Revenue and Tax Policy Committee. Jeanie, are you on one of their policy committees this year or not?
No, I took a bye.
Okay. You're taking a sabbatical. I get that. It was very interesting, because they had two different groups come talk to us. One was CalPERS to talk about their decision to lower the discount rate from seven and a half to seven. And the gentleman who came actually said that they've been recommending that to the board for a year and a half, and the board finally decided to act on it. And they said, the next meeting, they'll actually be recommending another decrease. Well, I mean, from the banking side of me, that makes sense. They're not getting the returns that they're, say they're going to get. So if they keep the rates or the projected number up high, and they keep coming in low, it doesn't look good. The problem is, every time they lower the rate, that means we, as a city, can't, anybody who's in the CalPERS system pays more. So interesting to hear him say that we're looking to do that as soon as possible to lower it to six and a half, because they don't think seven's a sustainable number either. Betty Yee was also there, wanted to talk to us about the ideas that they're floating down at the Capitol about overhauling the tax system in the state. Let me just say, when the state talks about overhauling this tax system, they're not looking to give you a break or me a break. They're actually looking at figuring out a way to make, get more taxes. And it's the first time I've heard the state actually talking about, it's been floated before, but seriously talking about taxing services. And what I mean is, you go to play golf, right? Today, you don't have to pay taxes on it. They're talking about sporting events taxing, going to the dentist. Can you imagine not only getting a braces bill, but then getting a tax bill for the braces on top of that? So it was interesting, because she was saying that it's all good stuff, because it'll make it a more level tax system, but at the end, you know who is going to pay for that. Library Board met today. Nothing exciting. We appointed a new chairman and vice chairman. And the only other thing I wanted to bring up is, last time we were here, or last meeting, which I wasn't here, I know gentleman got up and spoke specifically about dignity health, what's going on across the street, et cetera. And I know the city manager and staff took it to heart. They've been in touch with dignity health, working behind the scenes. Actually tried to get somebody out here to come speak tonight, but since they're, the person that was going to come is from out of the area, they did send a letter. And, you know, reiterating their commitment to the city, et cetera, et cetera. Having them pretty good authority that the lease should be finalized, knock on wood, next week. And then they would be looking to hold a groundbreaking ceremony soon thereafter. So it's pretty much what I indicated to this gentleman in an email before he came and spoke, that we're getting very, very, very close. There was just a couple, and I don't want to say hiccups, but a couple of changes in the program that the attorneys had to get together and, you know, speak to each other. They don't always speak English, so it takes several times to go back and forth. No offense, Ruth Ann. But we're almost there with the lease agreement, and I suspect in the very near future, you'll see equipment moving across the street, weather permitting. So that's it from my end. Next item, Amy.
So the next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. And any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda. And the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you, Amy. So I have four speakers here. They're actually all for number 12, but I'm going to bring them up now, just so that we can hear them, introduce themselves, and have a few minutes to digest their comments before we actually get to the item 12, which is a board and commission appointment. So first person I'm going to call up is David Stein, followed by Connie Hardison. Good evening, Mr. Stein.
Hello. Thank you for having me, council members. I appreciate your time tonight. I just want to introduce myself for those of you who haven't already met me. My name is David Stein, and I've kind of had an unofficial assistant commissioner position on the History and Arts Commission so far. So over the last nine months or so, I think I've participated in all of the events in terms of setting up or planning or driving the Halloween vehicle, for instance, for those of you who saw the Pooch Mobile. And I just want a chance to be able to participate a little bit more fully, to be a bigger part of it, maybe to take on a project of my own, and just to kind of help promote the culture, cultural arts in Citrus Heights. So I've got a background in creative writing, so I've got some background in arts of sorts. And in terms of bringing writing to the city, I would like to also see some more in that area, too. I know that Mary Lou Anderson also participates in writing, so maybe she and I could work on that together. But other than that, I just wanted to make sure that I made you aware that I was going out for the position. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, David.
He's coming.
Connie Hardison, followed by Doug Brumel.
Good evening, council members. And my, I wanted to come tonight.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, I say you can pull it down if it's more comfortable.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to come tonight to introduce myself. I've applied for a position, a seat on the Planning Committee. And over the years, I've seen, I grew up in Roseville, but I've lived in Citrus Heights for 14 years now, and I wanted a way to serve my community. While it's true I have no real government experience, I'm very willing to learn that, and also it would be fun to serve my community while I'm learning it. I've seen great growth over the years. My grandmother lived here, and when I grew up in Roseville, it used to, you know, we used to say we were going to the country in Citrus Heights to visit my grandmother. But now, as you know, we're all connected. And so I would very much enjoy and be honored if I had a chance to serve on the Planning Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Connie. Doug Brumel, followed by Marcel Wieland.
Good evening. My name is Doug Brumel. I've been a citizen of Citrus Heights since its inception, 1997. I'm an attorney by trade. That probably is, I think I indicated that on my application. My big interest is, I'm just interested in the city, how it develops. I tend to be a person, for example, even just the discussions earlier about the projects that are going on. Those are the kind of projects I just like to be involved in. In looking at the various positions, I didn't want to run for any office, but I wanted to get my foot in and see what was, in terms of something where I could be appointed, contribute. I tend to be a consensus-type person. I don't come in with any personal agenda. I, but I am a decision maker. That's one of the good things that I, character traits that I have, but I tend to be a real good listener, listen to all sides. I tend to be collaborative. Anyways, on the planning side, I've always been very interested in urban development. That was one of my minors in college, just in terms of how cities grow, why they grow, how they finance. And so this seemed like an interesting fit for me, and I hope it's an interesting fit if I was to be on, for you all, if I was on the Planning Commission. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Marcel Wieland.
Good evening. Privileged to be here tonight. I'm Marcel Wieland.
Wieland, oh, Josh.
It's all right. It happens all the time. I answer to both at this. I answer to both at this point, yeah. Wanted to address the council, just on why I applied for the Planning Commission. I applied after running for city council, as you know, and through that experience, I really developed a deep appreciation for the importance of local government, and the role that it can play in people's lives, improving our city and improving the lives of our neighbors. So, really want to be involved, and I think the Planning Commission is a, a good venue for me to do that. In terms of what I bring to the council, I've lived in the city for the past about 10 years. Went to school in Santa Clara University, and I've worked in the state Capitol, and I've spent the last three years working for a local technology startup company. But I think the most important thing that I would bring to the Planning Commission is the perspective of the next generation, of those of us who are going to inherit the city down the road. And I think that's an important perspective to have on the Planning Commission and in city management as a whole, and hope to bring that to bear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I will make note, there's several other folks who applied for the Planning Commission, many who we know, we're familiar with their names, but I will give any of them an opportunity if they'd like to come up and say a word before I close the public comment. Jim, Jack, Mark, John. Okay. Just wanted to be fair. Portia? Okay.
Your station speaks for themselves.
Yours does.[691.44][691.44](laughter)
But what?
All right. So, with that, we will go ahead and, I don't have any other speaker sheets. Amy, you don't have any other? Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Next item, please.
So, the next item is consent calendar items for consideration, items six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Any items on the consent calendar that a member wishes to pull? If not, I would.
Number seven and number eight.
Seven and eight pulled. I'd be willing to accept a motion on six, nine, and 10, and 11.
So, move.
All those, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven. Amy, if you would read it.
Item seven, the subject is agreement with King's Business LLC for supplemental police services.
Brett, are you looking for a report, or just?
Oh, no, 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 no. Just a real quick synopsis. Earlier today, we had a study session, and one of the things that came out of that was, basically, we need to tell our story. And so, I wanted to take this off the consent calendar, and I wanted us to share it with the public, because one of the things that, when I did run recently for city council was, that was voiced to me, was concerns that the casino could bring the wrong crowd into the area and cause crime and stuff like that. So, I'd like to tell the public about this agreement, and I'd like to also tell the public if we've seen any increased crime in that area, and also tell the public exactly why this is going in place, and whether it responds to any additional crime.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Chief Ron Lawrence, I've got the brains of the operation, Lieutenant Jason Russo with me here. He and his commander, Anderson, have negotiated this renewal agreement with King's LLC to provide police services at Stone's Casino. And I appreciate the opportunity to explain to you and the public the process, because it's actually, when we bring a contract before you, it gets vetted out quite thoroughly by my staff, from an operational perspective, our financial experts. Ultimately, we'll see about four different people in the police department, in addition to our financial experts, our city attorney, ultimately, the city manager. So, there's several eyes, at least a half a dozen people, who vet these contracts out. And I want to thank Lieutenant Russo, because when we learned that there were questions about this particular contract this afternoon, he took the time to put together this PowerPoint, so that we could explain and maybe answer your question.
You should see that, then.
So, thank you for doing that, Lieutenant, this afternoon, and with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, chief. Again, Lieutenant Jason Russo with the Police Department. I'm going to go over briefly the purpose of the contract. Basically, it's to provide police service and presence and deter crime in the area. We also develop some crime strategies, training of some of the security there, as well as encourage regular communication between us and their security team to enhance the overall security of the area. We also provide additional security in the parking lot and crowd control with needed, and that's all part of this agreement. And then, we enforce any laws around the perimeter of the casino. The terms of the contract are to provide at least 16 hours per week in and around the casino. The Stone's Casino pays for the overtime officer to work the shift and the assignment. The contract may be terminated at any point with 30-day notice, and is a 12-month contract with option for renewal. We've done analysis of the area since the casino has come in. We've noticed that with the activity around the casino, we do have a lot more activity, people visiting the casino, the associated businesses around it, so there is more pedestrian traffic activity in the area. There is an improved appearance to the shopping center, as it was vacant before. There is increased lighting, and now with their security around the facility 24/7, there is more high-visibility security in the center, as well as increased reporting of suspicious activity to the Police Department. We look at the statistics around the area. Before the casino opened, we were approximately 71 calls for service in the commercial area surrounding that building. And then, since they opened in 2015, we're about 97 calls. And then, last year, 2016, we're about 90 calls. So, not necessarily a great significant impact to the area, considering all the new traffic and pedestrians that are now frequenting that shopping center that weren't before. And then, just to go over the costs, an overtime officer, we charge a flat rate of $78 per hour on this contract and other contracts that we do within the city. This incorporates the, the maximum cost that we would bill for an officer. So, we actually only charge the true cost of the officer that works the shift, and then that includes the compensation for the officer having a vehicle and the gas and the benefits of that officer. This contract would provide about 832 hours of police presence, or supplemental police presence, to their existing security at the casino, and then the casino is billed monthly for the time that we spent there.
I'd like to add, too, that the casino has been an outstanding partner to the Police Department and the community, and I couldn't, we couldn't ask for a better situation in that location.
I think it's fair to say that this is proactive, and what we're doing is trying to make sure that, instead of bad things happening there and reacting to them, we're trying to be proactive. And so, I just want to make sure the community around that area especially knows that, and that when they see a car there, just like, over the last few years, we started having a car at the school, and the first thing you think of when you see the car is, you know, oh, what's going on? Something bad's happening. Now, it's normal to see the car. So, when they see a car at the casino, it doesn't mean something's bad. We're being proactive. And move the item.
Second.
Just a final comment before we hold a vote. You know, those numbers, they are what they are, but I have to say that, for the record, I probably go over there once a week, not because I gamble, but because they have a great restaurant. It is a nice place to go, it's a family place to go. It's a partnership between the city and the owners, and they are definitely being proactive. They have their own security force, but they want to have a presence of CHPD there. The ironic thing is, I don't think I've ever been there when I've seen less than seven or eight SAC sheriff officers there having dinner, too. So, there's a big presence there from law enforcement. And again, it's not a negative thing, it's a great thing. So, I personally believe that particular entity is going to drive economic development on the other side of the freeway. So, with that, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. And Brett, I'm sorry, was the other, item eight?
Eight, yes.
Thank you. Amy?
Item eight, the subject is annual financial report for the City of Citrus Heights.
And again, just, just a quick synopsis, so that we can tell our story. On the packet page number 43, there are financial highlights that are listed. Can we go over those just a little bit, and let the, the folks know that we're doing okay, and that we've got money? You know, just because you hear stories, you know, Citrus Heights will never make it financially, and even today, we hear those stories. So, if we could just kind of go over those, let them know where we're at, and that we're doing fine.
So, what, you said page 43?
Forty-three, I think it is. Financial highlights. There's five bullets.
You there?
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Daniel, the Finance Director. Financial highlights for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016. As of June 30th, 2016, the total assets of the city exceeded its liabilities by $382 million. The portion of net position that may be used to meet the government's ongoing obligations to citizens and creditors, the unrestricted net position is $14 million. The portion of net position that is restricted and may be only used for specific purposes is $15.7 million. And the remaining $351 million is invested in capital assets. As of June 30th, the governmental funds reported combined ending fund balances of $29 million. Over 63% of that, which is $18.6 million, is available to meet the city's current and future needs. The committed amount in the general fund of $18.3 million represents amounts committed to capital projects and accounts a commitment for economic uncertainties and anticipated future short-term structural deficits, also known as revenue stabilization. Under the revenue neutrality agreement with the County of Sacramento, $4.6 million of the property tax was retained by the county as a payment under the agreement. These payments are expected to continue through the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Capital assets net of depreciation decreased to $365 million from $376 million, which includes $322 million of infrastructure.
Thanks, Stephanie. Again, I just want citizens to know that we're doing good, we're doing okay, even with having to pay the hostage payment of revenue neutrality for a few more years, and then after that, we'll be even better. So, move the item.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Stephanie.
So, next item, public hearings, there are none. So, the next item is regular calendar, item number 12, which is the city board and commission appointments. So, several planning commission, history and arts, and construction board of appeals appointments are expiring or are currently vacant. So, the city solicited applications for these boards and commissions. We received a total of 28 applications. 18 were for the planning commission, eight were for the history and arts, and three were for the construction board of appeals. So, it's recommended tonight that the city council make those appointments to the boards individually, so taking the planning commission first, and history and arts, and then construction board of appeals. I suggest that the council ask the individual appointments be made first, so that would be Mayor Slowey and Councilmember Daniels to make their individual appointments, vote on those individual appointments, and then the remaining applicants would be considered for the at-large appointments. And we do have one additional individual appointment to the History and Arts Commission made by Councilmember Bruins for a position that's currently vacant.
Great. Thank you, Amy. And for all of those who have applied, I think, as you heard, there was a total of 28. My sheet says 29, I don't know why. But, you know, this is always the tough part, because, you know, you're all good people, you all bring something different to the table. At the end of the day, some of us get, you know, one individual ratified, and then, you know, not a lot of appointments to come out of 28 names. So, again, I want to thank everybody who put in, and if, you know, if you don't get selected tonight, keep trying, and, and don't get discouraged, there's other ways to get involved. So, again, thank you for everybody who put their names in. For my nomination to the Planning Commission, I'm going to re, recommend reappointing Christie DeSalle, so I will make that motion, if anybody wants the second.
Second it.
Thank you. So, we have Christie DeSalle, motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Brett, you have a, I'm sorry, we'll just go down here, yeah. You have a motion or a?
Yeah, my nominee will be Jim Remick. Jim's been a longtime resident, business owner, previous business owner, heavily involved in the community, and has served on some various, very important boards with Citrus Heights in the past, and he will be my nominee.
Okay. So, Mr. Remick has been nominated. Do we have a second? Okay. So, if we do not get a second, then the motion does not carry. And do you have a second recommendation, Brett?
I do not.
Okay. We'll come back to that, then. Now, is this the one? No, you have the history and arts.
We have a couple of that.
Do the at-large?
We could do at-large, now we're going to history and arts first.
Yeah.
We can do the at-large appointments to the Planning Commission. I would ask that each council member nominate two individuals, or, and I will tally up the results, and we'll see how many tallies each of those nominations receive.
So, so before we go to the at-large, I just want to circle back. So, Brett nominated somebody that didn't get second, so the name doesn't go forward. If he doesn't have a second, it's my understand, if he doesn't want to appoint somebody off this list, wouldn't the person who would be vacating the spot remain there until that spot was filled? Ruth Ann, is that how I understand that? If, if they wish to continue?
Yes, that is correct. The current Planning Commissioner, whose term would have otherwise expired, will continue to serve until his or her successor qualifies. That's a provision in our municipal code.
Okay. And for the record, Amy, that is?
That, Rick Doyle.
Okay.
Was councilmember for something like?
So, Brett, you do not wish to select somebody else off the list at this time?
No.
Okay. All right, so, we'll start with Jeanie. If you would like to name your two choices for at-large.
Marcel Wieland.
Thank you for pronouncing it correctly. Brett, for your at-large on the Planning Commission?
Jack Duncan and Trish Dawson.
Mr. Miller?
Jack Duncan and Marcel Wieland?
Wieland.
Wieland, Wieland, just Marcel.
It was, it's just like Seaford and Seiford, I had never figured that one out.
Okay. So, I will, Marcel, and we won't pronounce his last name wrong, because I'm not going to say it. My second choice was, well, not second, but my other one was going to be to reappoint Michael Argomarcino. And so, by doing that, Marcel automatically goes.
And so does Jack.
Well, I'm not sure that that's the case, because it's two, and technically, you need three.
Oh, we need to vote on it.
Right. So, here, here's what, so Marcel's there, right? Because he's got three votes.
Yes, and the council will need to ratify that.
Right, I, I get that in a minute.
Then I will change my vote from Douglas Brumell to Jack Duncan.
I guess I don't need to say anymore. Jack, are you going to be able to stay up late enough to attend these meetings?
I was expecting you'd have a couch here.
Okay. All right.
I won't say what I was going to say.
All right. So, the, we have three for Jack Duncan, three for Marcel Wieland. I will go ahead and make a motion that those two get appointed to the at-large positions. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And again, thank you all to those who put in for the Planning Commission. Next, we will move over to history and arts. I will nominate Sally Kerrington to sit on the History and Arts Commission. Bless you.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second on that. We need a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, Sally's on, and then Mr. Daniels?
E.V. Turner.
E.V. Turner. Here we go.
Second.
Second. We have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. So, those two, and then you have a term to fill, since somebody who resigned. Who is your?
I nominate Larry Fritz.
Very good. All right. I will second that, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.[1768.23] All right. So, those fill the individual appointments, and we have two at-large as well.
Correct.
Brett, I would start with you on who you would like for your choices for the at-large.
I'll pass. Nobody.
Okay.
And I'm reassessing, because I had Fritz and Turner's at-large.
Yeah, that doesn't work, does it?
No, and I've...but I've been through all the...
I'm sorry. I'm...excuse me. David Stein.
Okay. So, just one, as opposed to two that you get?
Yeah.
All right.
I'd do David Stein as well, and there was...if you bear with me.
Yeah, we'll give you a second.
And that's Larry.
And I know it throws it off when the one you're thinking of gets selected.
And my second one will be...
I'll tell you what.
Sally Kerrington.
Oh, okay. No, you can't.
You can't.
I already took her. So, I'll come back to you in a minute.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Yeah, I'll go to Jeannie now.
Okay. Mary Lou Anderson.
Good choice, Jeff.
And David Stein.
I'm going to do David Stein and Mary Lou Anderson. Steve, you get one more.
Okay. And I would be...I also hadn't...Mary Lou ranked very high, so...
Mary Lou Anderson is what you're saying? All right. So, Mary Lou and Mr. Stein, I would motion those two to be put into the at-large.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Say...all right. So, congratulations to those who either got an individual appointment or a at-large. The staff will be getting in touch with you to set up some introductory calls, you know, bring you up to speed, and we'll go from there. Again, thank you for the rest of you folks who put in applications. Do appreciate the time and energy that went into them.
And we just have one more board, the construction board of appeals.
Oh, that one, the one that never meets.
So, this board, there are five...
Very encouraging.
There are five seats available. We received three applications. We are continuing to solicit applications for the remaining seats, but for...
Are these filling any particular, like, specific position on the board, or are they at-large?
They are all at-large. The terms vary. Some of them expire sooner than others, just because of the nature of the vacant positions.
So, help me again. We received three, there's five on the board.
Correct.
Okay, so, doesn't take rocket science to figure out if you just...
So, I move that we accept all three of these nominees or candidates?
Okay. We have a motion to accept the three and continue to look for two more. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mayor Slowey, if I could just clarify, so, two of the appointments, do you want to make two of those appointments or all three to the four-year appointment where they expire in 2018? Because we have two-year appointment or four-year appointment option.
Okay.
I move we make them four-year appointments. I think we can get the other two easier if they only have to serve a couple of years.
Yeah. They applied, they were first, so that's fine for four-year, and we'll continue to recruit for two years if we can find it.
Okay.
So, we do have a motion and a second on the four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right. Did I miss any other boards or commissions we're doing tonight? All right.
No, that was all of them. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is department report number 13. The subject is available shelter beds and navigator program update.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Kathryn Cooley, development specialist with the community and economic development department. I'm joined here by the chief of police, Ron Lawrence. We are here tonight to give you a update on the city and the police department's homelessness response efforts. This is going to be separated into two sections. We have what I like to describe as our point of referral for services, which is the Citrus Heights Navigator. This is how the homeless population in Citrus Heights receives those connections to resources that may not be easily accessible in a suburban community. The next section will be a recap on the resources available to the homeless population in Sacramento County. If you recall, this was a request from the council at your strategic planning retreat that you receive an update on what available shelter beds there are to the homeless countywide. And so, with that, our navigator program, the full-time version of this has been operational for a little bit more than five months. We've had some setup time at the beginning of the fiscal year, but it's been operational. I'd like to introduce our navigator, Lauren Justkellis. She's in the back here. That is your Citrus Heights Navigator. She's available for any questions, detailed questions you may have. If you recall, in the last fiscal year, 1516, this was a pilot program in the amount of about $10,000. Citrus Heights Heart applied for a grant to do this program, and because of their hard work, it was successful. And at the end of the year, we realized 50% of clients were permanently or temporarily housed through this program, which equated to the 32 participants that you see there and the breakdown of their situation. And so, because of these successes, the council elected to expand this to a full-time program. Lauren is an employee through Sacramento Self-Health Housing, and so, we contract with that nonprofit organization for this service. So, this is the data from the first half of this fiscal year. This is 40 hours of service for the Citrus Heights community. This program is funded through a variety of sources. Right now, it's funded through CDBG, which is federal grant funds, community support and economic development support funding as well, which are essentially local general funds. The program has realized the same success rate, even has increased slightly. 53% of the clients have been permanently or temporarily housed. It's been about 76 total participants to date, with 21 of those being permanently housed, the rest being in a variety of temporary housing. This also includes the Citrus Heights Winter Sanctuary that has been operational this year for...or this winter for about six weeks and is currently underway. Other services have been provided through this program, and I like to describe it as, yes, the navigator comes alongside the client and provides these services. The reason she is doing this is to expand someone's stability and capabilities so they have more access to housing. So, that's the intent. So, whereas the navigator is providing someone with or helping them apply for SSI, that is to give them an income stream, so their options for housing expand, and so, they have more of an ability to do that. You'll see the county system VI SPDOT on this list. That's basically the county intake to get you in the queue, to get you those countywide resources that we're going to be referring to. So, 20 people have been entered into that countywide system. So, any effort that the navigator undertakes, it's to get someone the tools that they need to be permanently housed ideally. As this program progresses, we wanted to analyze a little bit as far as what sort of resources may this program be relieving. As you know, our police department responds to calls for service on this topic. And so, what we did is we took those call for service, we tallied them up for the people who have been permanently or temporarily housed, and we did a little bit of analysis on what that has cost the police department in the past to respond to those individuals. So, we understand that, say, someone who's been temporarily housed, that doesn't mean a permanent relief of those resources, but it means that that person is expressing the initiative to get in housing, and hopefully, that will result in something permanent in the future. And so, for example, these individuals have triggered one to 22 calls for service from our police department. Those who have been permanently housed have been involved in 39 calls for service. Those who have been temporarily housed have been involved in 57. And this number just represents Citrus Heights costs. It doesn't necessarily...it does not represent the fire department's costs along this topic or EMT services. Those are not really quantifiable on our end, but there's that underlying cost as well to the community.
Question on that?
Yes.
Is this indicating that you have at least one person who was responsible for 22 calls for service?
Yes.
Wow.
And so, that's the resource that we're hoping to relieve of this drain by placing this person in permanent housing.
Well, I want to start my portion of this presentation by thanking Kathryn Cooley and her team. The navigator program is really...it's really an innovative program, and I'm pleased to see how it interfaces with the police department. I had an occasion to speak with the chief of police in Elk Grove, new chief, and he was speaking to me about a program he's trying to put together in Elk Grove called a navigator program. So, once again, we're ahead of Elk Grove in their efforts. If I could get you that. There you go. So, we coordinate our local homeless survey in Rockland...oh, Rockland, excuse me. That's the first time.
Whoa.
That is the first time.
Watch it there, chief.
The R-word has slipped. My apologies.
Oh, man.
But when we're done coordinating with Rockland, we'll coordinate here.
My apologies. We conduct in Citrus Heights.
Thank you.
An annual local homeless survey, once a year in April.
Yep. That's where your paycheck comes from. I'm just...
I'm not sure I'm going to be able to get through the rest of this. We also coordinate with Sacramento Steps Forward. The difference is our methodology and theirs is quite remarkably different. Theirs is predicated on HUD criteria and is limited to a small window of only a few hours in one time a day. That number...the count took place last night, so we were actually a part of that, and they actually partner with us quite well. We identify areas and individuals. We continue to work closely with our navigator to...for outreach to camps and to get homeless persons to proper programs or emergency shelters, particularly in the wintertime when the temperatures dip below 40 degrees. But at the same time, we also recognize that the enforcement of laws of those behaviors that are typically involving homeless issues are also important to enforce. So, we try to get the right people into the right programs. We get the folks that have addiction issues or mental health issues are working with our navigator into the right programs, but by the same token, the rest of the community can't be held hostage to those types of criminal behaviors. We estimate our homeless population in Citrus Heights to be 192. In our last study, 23% of them stated they were non-Citrus Heights residents. 6% appeared homeless, 58% admitted to drug or alcohol addiction, 30% were on parole or probation, and 26% claimed to suffer from mental illness. Based on the Sacramento Steps Forward 2015 homeless count, the countywide estimate is 2,659 homeless persons with an estimated 948 who are unsheltered at any given time. You might recall our last strategic plan. One of the items was for me to report out to the council how many emergency shelter beds we had available to us. And I'm pleased to report that we have available to us a wide array of very diverse programs that we can tap into and have accessible to us. We identified 698 emergency shelter beds and 106 units provided by 34 different emergency shelters, of which five are seasonal shelters, five are crisis centers, and four are day centers. A few shelters are privately funded, some are publicly funded, but most have some combination of public and private funding, and all are available for our use. Now, admittedly, because of the countywide population, some of these shelters get impacted, so there are times when certain shelters have a wait list that we get put on. Of course, these temporary shelters do not include long-term housing, which is the long-term goal for individual sustainability. The emergency shelters serve a wide variety of diverse programs, and you can see this slide demonstrates the different types of specific sheltering we have available to us. There's two for adult men and women, three for adult males, one for young adults ages 18 to 24, and another five exclusively to families, ones for mothers and children. Two are exclusively for youth, three for dependent adults or those suffering from medical or mental health issues. Four are confidential locations for domestic violence victims, or rather, survivors. Four are day centers, five are crisis centers, and five seasonal shelters. It's important to...for me to highlight also the Red Cross, because albeit not a what you would think of as a homeless shelter, but it is a shelter nonetheless, and it's important to note that while it doesn't play a primary role on a continual basis, it is available to us to establish shelters or housing for displaced families due to unforeseen emergencies such as fires, floods, earthquakes, et cetera. Recently, the Sacramento city and county governments began a pilot program for warming centers during the winter months. Typically, this is overnight, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, when the temperature's below 40 degrees, and they extended their months for that. We also have our Citrus Heights Heart winter shelter, which Kathryn can explain more about.
Yes. So, this is the first year that Citrus Heights Heart has done an entire winter shelter on their own. Last year, they participated for one week in Rancho Cordova Shelter, and people were bussed back and forth. So, this year, pardon me, they have a full six-week shelter. It started on December 26th and will end February 11th. They have a maximum capacity of 20 people. They're averaging about 12 a night. And our navigator is also attending the shelter. She's having lots of office hours there and enrolling people in services, putting them on that list, countywide list that I mentioned. They get dinner, and then they have cots and sleeping bags where they sleep for the night, and then they're given a to-go breakfast, and they are bussed back to the intake center, which is Messiah Lutheran Church this year. And so, it's well underway. It is successful, and this is their first year, really, of a six-week effort, similar to other suburban communities that have functioned over the last number of years. And so, with that, our next steps for the rest of the year are to continue compiling this data for you on the navigator program. We're going to come back with a full report at a later date for you to consider whether or not you'd like to consider it into...or fund it into the next fiscal year. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Could I ask our navigator to come up front, if you don't mind?
Yep.
Thank you. One, I just want people to be able to see you, not that you like to keep a low profile, but...and more importantly, to thank you for all your efforts. I mean, I've been doing this gig for 14 years, and the highest numbers we've got before we switched to this program were in the low 30%. So, to have you here a year and a half, and, you know, 53%, normally, that wouldn't get you a big pat on the back, but in this instance, with homelessness for the, you know, the number that we're sheltering, that's phenomenal numbers. I mean, especially since we're not real open with our purse strings. So, thank you for everything that you do. Just keep up the good work.
Thank you, guys.
I can't stress that enough, that, you know, we've heard from a lot of our constituents that homelessness and out in front of businesses, and hearing that you're having luck with 53% of them, that's great.
Yep.
So, thank you very much for all that you do.
I would like to thank the city council, and thank you, Kathryn, and the police department for being good supporters, so...
Thank you.
We have other groups within the community, too, that I know have stepped up to help, you know, that you have to have people with the, you know, from the community, not...babysit's the wrong word, but, I mean, be with them throughout the night, and they're not just... the folks that are being sheltered aren't just left unattended. That's the word I want. You need attendance with them, and I know because I get those emails, and I can see who steps up to help do that. And so, this effort, kind of like the Christmas referral program, is beginning to expand in its first year of full operation to include other elements of the community, and I'm just really pleased to see that. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Anybody have any questions or follow-up for the chief or Kathryn? Brett?
Yeah, thank you. This is a big issue. You know, it's a political hot button. It's a quality life issue, and sometimes I feel like we're trying to do things that are not going to change this in some ways, and then we're doing a lot of good things that will change this. For me, it's basically three categories, even though there are exceptions, but it's either the mentally ill, the addicted, or the down-on-your-luck person that's out there homeless. There is, I guess, a group that just wants to be homeless, and, you know, and that's fine, too. And we... And we should have compassion, and I want to have compassion, but when activities spill over and they impede on the quality of life of other people, residents, businesses and stuff like that, we need to have, I think, even a more aggressive approach. I get told by business owners that they have a problem with homeless folks living and, you know, staying overnight in their areas and, and just doing horrible things. They're afraid to call, they're afraid to push people out because of the retaliation effort. So I would like to see us do better with that. I would like to see us step up maybe and have our officers, when they notice somebody that's in maybe a commercial area, to move them along, move them along, because the property owners fearful of doing it. They tell me they're fearful to do that because they're just going to get a window broken or something like that, and they're going to be even worse off. On the flip side, though, I'd like to see us do some things that, that can especially take the person who's maybe down and out and, and see if we can lift them up. And I love the idea, I've seen that thing where you have the mobile showering, you know, let people clean up a little bit. I love the idea of giving somebody some temporary housing where you get them into a hotel room and, you know, get them stabilized, and maybe we give them some even resume-type of help. You know, we connect them into a computer, find them a job if we can, and, and we do that on a very short-term basis because they've got to buy in and they've got to own it, too. And, and I don't want us to just be some organization or entity that, that just provides something on and on and on. I can't believe that we've had to deal with somebody 22 times. 22 times is ludicrous. 22 times is about 21 more times, and I could have tolerated, you know, instead of finding some other solution that didn't include Citrus Heights. But we've got to do something a little bit more aggressive because the community is, they've had it. And, you know, I cannot stand to see somebody traipsing down the street or fall out over the sidewalk with three shopping carts full of stuff, and again, all over somebody else's property or business property, and I just know that person's just afraid to call, you know. People call, I know some call, but it just really bothers me because business owners have told me they're fearful. So I'd like to see us be a little more aggressive on that end, with even more compassion on the other end to give a hand up and get these folks something more permanent.
Great, thank you. Chief Catherine, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate, and I think you checked it off, chief, and, except for that little Rockland slight thing before the due date, so, good job. All right, next item, please.
Next item is city manager items, and there are none. Next is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
I'd like to hear a little more on, a report on the CalPERS issue and the smoothing that they're going to be doing over the next five to eight years and the impact on us. Now, not immediate, maybe part of the budget process because we know this is coming up, but kind of like to learn a little bit more of the impact that we're going to see.
We'd be happy to do that. We, with the numbers that we have right now, we have programmed that out into the budget, which, as we know right now, won't affect this coming year, but that could be week to week. So we'll certainly had intended to discuss that with you then. If events, you know, come about where you might want to hear more of an update at a council meeting before that, then please just let me know, or I'll let you know, and we'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
And as is required, since you can't put it on by yourself, I'll second that, so we're two people moving it forward. Anybody else have anything for comments? All right. With that, nothing else, I will go ahead and close the meeting.
Oh, jeez.
What's coffee?